Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't do that last.
Okay, yes. In the video.
Yeah, why is it?
Down, down to the bottom, bottom, right, bottom. There you go. All right.
Here we go.
Now we're good.
All right, now we're good.
Okay. Now we're good. Um, yeah, so Colonel Ledger Estates, the last time you spoke with these folks, as you'll recall, it was consideration of pulling the bond because the work has been going so slow. So you asked them to give you an update on progress at this meeting as well as some signed contracts. Those items are, were in your packet. We also have the contractor who's going to be GCing the work here to kind of give you an update as to what, what progress they're making and what their anticipated schedule of completion is. Guys want to?
So.
I'm William Chauvin with Randall Relters here on behalf of the Eck Houses. And I can just cover one part of it. And then Mr. Beebe will cover the stuff that takes someone who's intelligent about all this to talk about it. One of the things what had to do with doing an ASBIL. And we did get, we've hired Glenn, Glenn Zagorevsky at DGP Associates. They are going to be, they're already started working on it. The second part of their job, which also the concrete monuments, which is on the list of things to be done. They're having discussions with town planning because what happened was there are monuments. They found a lot of the monuments, but the monuments weren't marked or set up the way that it's supposed to, according to plan. So they are getting with them to find out what the town, it's a planning department, not.
No, it's Public Works.
Public Works is going to find acceptable. So so far, we have the contract and the deposit signed for the ASBIL. And we're just waiting for, you know, them to tell them what they want to do with the concrete monuments. Do you need a copy of the check and the?
I think I've got that.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I'll hand over Mr. Beebe, who will talk more intelligent than I am about all the projects.
David Beebe, Cardinal Land Works, representing the Eck Houses. We have contracts for the trees along the road. We have contract or the roadway behind the placate. That's in place. We have a contract with the fence around the placate. And at this point, we're working with different placate companies to put in the placates themselves. So they had to rearrange it because of the size. And at this point, they're still looking to figure out what they're going to do about the sidewalks, the different sized sidewalks. And that's pretty much where they're at right now. But all those contracts are signed and ready to go, weather permitting. That's pretty much it at this point. There's an issue with the water that address we're going to address, but other than that.
So when do you think you're going to actually start work on?
Well, as soon as.
This weather.
Yeah, the weather.
Weather related.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're not going to do trees till spring. Um, we're hoping to get in and do the roadway as soon as possible. The fence contract signed, but we're not going to do the fence until they put in the placate. And I'll just keep you posted on that as we, as we prolong.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions?
So.
I think we would like to have a monthly report.
Absolutely.
If we could have one for our second meeting in February.
Sorry, Chair. The weather stays warm and we want to get in there.
Right. So for that, the report, so we received documentation though, correct? On this.
That's correct.
Right.
On some of the contracts, yeah.
Right. So all we have to do is just keep that document updated per month. That's all I love to see. So you kind of see the metrics that the movement and the forward cadence is, is great. That'd be, that'd be very much appreciated.
Great.
So just to recap, do you need me here by February meeting? Is that what you're saying or?
We want to, we want an update at the second meeting in February as to where you are with the work, whether it's started.
Sign for thirteen. February thirteen and twenty seven.
Twenty seventh.
Since we got our calendar.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do they need to come in or can they just?
If, if you give us a written schedule and tell us where you are, you wouldn't have to.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, I've been in constant contact with Tom, working with.
Yep, okay.
With them on. And that's it.
Sure.
Now I've got something from DG, the associates over there, so I'll get to it.
Very good.
Also, the, the light pole.
Right.
We have a, we have the electrician working on that too.
Okay.
I didn't get an update though.
Okay.
Well, I'll have updates for you.
Oh, on that site, you said there was a problem with, with sidewalk?
Yeah, they're four feet and they want them five feet.
Oh, you mean the plant says five and.
Correct.
They have built them to.
I think they did it that way because the building's act is four and the old development is four and he just assumed it was four.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, I was just. So who makes that decision?
You, I guess.
Well, we'll get a recommendation from Public Works. But, but the subdivision regulations call for five.
No.
They're going to have to dig everywhere.
Yep.
So you'll talk to Public Works.
Exactly.
Yeah, let us know.
Yep.
It's now giving you the address of it.
Yep.
Otherwise, everything's on track.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
That's, that's the big issue then.
Right, right. Yeah, no, things are moving. Things are moving.
Okay.
Well, we apologize. We have, you know, our owner there, he had a stroke a couple of years ago. He was here last time, you could tell he's not totally with it. And sometimes he thinks stuff is done that wasn't done. And he had some bad contractors in the beginning. So, but we're on it and we're going to make sure everything gets done. It's not my expertise. So learn to get that go.
We just started out as a contractor, but we just had to help him get the tone.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is Site Plan twenty three oh oh two, take five oil change.
Right, so we are in the process of promoting the applicant and his design team. As you recall, at the last meeting, you had asked them to look at a couple of different options for improving the circulation on site and to discuss those with DOT. So in your packet, there were, there, there's a discussion of the number of alternatives they discussed with DOT. And they revised plans with one of the alternatives. And I'll let them go ahead and take you through it.
Thank you very much, Deb. Uh, Deb, would you mind unmuting the phone number that's two oh three and it ends in fourteen hundred? That's also Bob. Two oh three, perfect. Thank you so much.
I'm going to just lay things out in front of you. I said the last time it was going to be difficult.
Okay, is that on Jeff? Can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you, Bob. Thank you very much.
Bob, I'm going to assume you're going to share your screen. Is that correct?
Uh, I can, yep.
Yep, and just go ahead and, and review the, the option that you, that you submitted.
Okay, good evening, commission members. My name is Bob Weaway. I'm a licensed professional engineer and principal with Co-Dispoing Associates with offices at two sixty-three Boston Post Road in Orange, Connecticut. And we're back before the commission tonight to present an alternate plan based upon the concerns from the commission at the last meeting with regards to the internal vehicle flow going through the site. Since that last meeting, our office has done, has come up with four or five different alternates, which we had presented to DOT. And a number of those were knocked out by DOT as being not acceptable due to traffic constraints and proximity to the Meriden Street Extension Intersection. So basically, they left us with, with two alternates. And the main alternate is the one that we submitted back to the commission tonight. So what I have up on the screen right now is sheet SP one, which is the site plan drawing. And what this, what this drawing does here, or what this particular layout has, is a right turn entrance into, into the site, which would come down through here. And then vehicles would have the opportunity to enter the building here for servicing and then exit out through the front of the building and then a right turn only onto Long Hill Road. For those vehicles, they're either parking or not going in through the servicing. They would also have the ability to come around the side of the building and then exit through that same right turn exit only. So this plan was presented to DOT and it was acceptable, acceptable to them. I believe that as part of the package, we did submit that submission that we had with the email chain that went up to DOT along with the five different alternates that we presented to them for consideration. So with this layout, we did, we did make a couple of changes to the grading and stormwater management plan. What we ended up doing was I'll switch over to the grading plan. And what this basically shows is that we have the, the same basic configuration where we have the galleries in, along this side here in the rear. We did adjust these slightly along with some of the drainage in here just to pick up a better flow. The size of the gallery increased slightly because with this particular layout, we did increase the amount of impervious coverage slight, slightly. So we did have to accommodate that through increasing basically the stone size around the gallery to make up for that increased volume for the water quality. So that's basically a quick overview of what the revised submission is. I think it addresses what the commission was looking for from the previous plan in that right now with this layout, there will be no internal crossing of traffic through, through the paths on the internal portion of the site. And everything flows out to Long Hill Road. So I think with that, you know, if the commission has any questions, we'll certainly try, try to answer them.
Okay. Does staff have anything to add or?
I don't have anything else to add, no.
So can I, commissioners, if they have any questions or concerns?
I sure have known this looks like what I was proposing. So, but thank you very much. It looks like dead on what I thought would work. I'm glad the DOT agreed.
Like.
I, I have no questions. Looks good.
So.
No, I thought it looked good. Thank you.
Kevin.
Um, is this alternate four or five?
Five.
Uh, this would be alternate number five from, from the package submission. Alternate four.
Oh, it's okay. I just, I'm okay. I just, I just wanted to alternate five. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, yeah, but al- alternate four was basically our original submission with a little bit of a twist on it. So what we did in the alternate four was just basically to add stop bars and stop signs internal to the site. So that would have, you know, while you would have still had crossing traffic going through, through there, the stop bars would have provided some extra le- level of protection. So with that being said, alternate four and alternate five are basically the two that we're presenting to the commission. Alternate four was the original submission, which in our opinion is approvable. And then we, we supplemented that with the alternate that, that we have before you tonight, which shows the right, right turn in and right turnout.
Yeah, so that provides the clarity that I was asking for. And that's exactly, I believe, what we asked, so I'm fine, Chair.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions. Uh, this new proposal will mean that no, the only way to get into the site is coming down Long Hill Road? If you are going up, you, you can't get into the site?
Yeah, that, that's, that, that's correct. That's one of the things that when Jeff from our office went through it with, with DOT. And that's why the driveway was kind of set up with those radiuses to try to dissuade anybody from making that left-hand turn.
Oh, okay. All right.
Coming up Long Hill Road.
No, I just want to make sure that's what's going to happen. For employees, I noticed there's no break room or anything for lunch or anything else inside the building. But what do people do there? There.
So there's a small office in, inside the building. With a bathroom and a, and a storage room. So they have lunch in there, they have lunch in their cars, or they maybe go across the street for lunch.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so you have the ma- the manager's office in here.
Right, I noticed that, but it said managers.
Down in the back here.
So work of these don't go in there. Um, on the drawings, when they get submitted, for the signage that is not going to be approved with this, is there any reason that they aren't going to be closed out or crossed out or deleted on the MyLars that gets signed? Because right now, it's just a little tiny note.
So I think what, well, we'll have a bigger note on that, that this sign package is not approved as part of.
Well, why can't they just X them out and, you know, leave them there and just draw hash?
Right, we could.
Or do something or erase.
Do something to make it very clear that it's not part of the approval package.
Yes, more than just a note.
Right, okay.
Because I think that could be easily overlooked with all the information.
Right. I mean, they will still have to apply.
No, I know that.
Zoning permit for all of that.
I just don't want somebody to get, think that, or go so far as to put the signs up and then say, oops, I made a.
Okay.
I misread the plans.
Okay.
That was all I. I didn't have anything else. So we could have that as a technical, technical, technical issue. Because I've seen too many cases where things get overlooked.
What's with white sidewalk as opposed to a five?
There you go.
Yeah. Just have to get a little scale.
Yeah. Happens. Happens.
Oh, it's easy. Easy. Does anyone have any other questions? So we have a proposed motion. Does anyone have concerns in there?
Does anyone need a copy?
Does anyone need?
No, we received it.
Okay, so make a motion to approve us. Site Plan SIT twenty three zero 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 two for take five oil change at six seventy one Long Hill Road with the following modifications. One, any revisions to the plan required by Grotten Utilities, the Fire Marshal, or any other outside agency shall require additional review and approval by the Office of Planning and Development. Staff for the Planning and Zoning Commission is appropriate. Two, the sign is shown on the architectural elevations are not approved as part of the site plan and will be considered under a separate zoning permit. Three, technical items as identified by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on the motion, concerns on the motion? And we'll vote on, on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have is Site Plan twenty three zero 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 three Blue Turtle LLC, one Water Street. What's the red thing for?
That's just the light of above.
No, but does it mean anything?
I don't know. That's new. I don't know what that's.
Oh. Just looks like a laser beam.
Yeah, it does.
Got to have the rover rocks.
All right.
Maybe you should be able to use that red light as, as a target. Well, I could.
Now we know.
Good.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, Peter Spring Steel, licensed architect in the state of Connecticut. Here tonight, representing Blue Turtle LLC, who's the owner of the property, which is one Water Street. I also have here tonight Ed Wenke, who is our civil engineer. And I have the owner's representative, Paul Sasser, in the back here as well. The tenant was going to try and join us via Zoom, but I'm not sure. I don't see their name up there at the moment. But in any case, this building is known as the Denzmore Oil Company Building at the corner of Water Street and West Main Street in downtown Mystic. In your report, it does say this building was built in nineteen ten. It's actually a pre-Civil War building. So it's all. It's also in the flood zone, as you're probably well aware. And the plan here is to do modifications within the fifty percent value of the structure. But I do want you to know, I have a, a application into the zoning board of appeals to waive that fifty percent valuation. Because if we do both phases, both floors, it's probably going to go over the fifty percent. And there is a, a means in your regulations to grant variances for historic buildings that are on the historic register, and this building is. But that's kind of a building department issue when we start to get into pulling building permits. If we have our variance in time for all phases of the work, we'll pull both at the same time. Otherwise, we're going to limit it to the fifty percent value. So we're not making any exterior changes to the building other than doing a larger first floor door into the retail space in order to give us a accessible entrance into the building. There is not one at this time. The floor of the building is cocked nine inches from the front to the back. So at the front, there's a step down, so that wouldn't be handicap accessible. So we're going to take out the old wood floor. We're going to infill the crawl space and pour concrete slab that'll be level. And that'll give us a straight shot into the building. The historic commission has already approved that door change. The only other exterior improvement is the screen around the HVAC units that sit on a roof in the back of the building. Those items have been approved by the Historic District Commission. So the first floor tenant is proposed to be a company called Boost Bowls. And what they do is, it's essentially a fast food business. They don't do any cooking on site, so it's cold and some warmed up food in microwave. But there's no cooking facility that would require a hood and all that goes along with that. We are installing a grease trap outdoors in the back parking lot to handle the sink waste. I'll let Ed explain the parking scenario. He's done, he's gone through all the parking calculations. The second floor was approved as a two-family, or I'm sorry, a two-bedroom apartment. Denzmore was using it as an office space, I believe. So that was approved previously by this commission, I believe.
Uh, it, yeah, it was an administrative site plan approval back in two thousand twenty-one.
So there's real, that's really just interior improvements. We're not going to be doing anything to the exterior of that second floor area. Ed, maybe you should come up and explain the parking scenario here.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ed Wenke, licensed professional engineer, project engineer for this. Just walk you quickly through the site. This was done. Existing conditions on the site. And I overlaid it onto a drone footage that we took over the site just recently. So this is all pretty much up to date. So this is the existing building right here. This is the subject property, which is rectangle here. It's not a very large piece of property. It's four thousand change square feet, which is pretty typical of most downtown properties. There is an existing, I think, six spaces back here that not really, they don't conform to current dimensions. But the entire site, as you can see, is impervious. There is, there's no green space, there's no anything. So what we're proposing to do is actually minimal on the outside. We do need to provide parking for this, this, these two uses. The access to this site, before we get into parking, the access to the site is going to be the existing driveway that we developed previously for the property next door, the standard building. And that goes, goes all the way around and comes back out. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. We have easements in place, so easements have been on record even before this project has started for doing that. Uh, so that's how we're getting in and out. There's no new driveways coming out onto Water Street. As far as parking is concerned, we did the parking calculations on this based on the two uses. We have the fast food use down below and we have basing the parking based on forty threes, forty-three people, correct? I have it written down here. Fourteen seats, thank you, thank you. So we, we did the parking calculations based on fourteen seats. And we have two spaces required for the apartment up above. In the MDD, as you know, we have a fifty percent reduction allowed for parking. At the end of the day, after running the calculations, this entire project with these proposed uses generates seven required spaces. So we have provided in the rear, same parking areas as what they're using now. But we provided five new spaces back there, including one handicap. We need to provide the handicapped, obviously, for the building. So we have five new spaces here, so we have a deficit of two spaces. Those two spaces are being made up as part of the parking voucher system with the Mystic Art Association. The applicant has already purchased a whole bunch of parking vouchers for that. And they'll continue to do so, participating in that program. And that is all allowed down here in the Mystic Design District. So parking is taken care of. Parking currently meets, conforms to all your regulations. Truck loading is not required in the MDD. The use here will require probably some truck deliveries. They're going to be light. But when we originally designed this site here next door for the standard, we have a truck loading area back there that's currently dual use between the standards retail and also the SIFT bakery. That is also going to be the curbside parking use for this. And deliveries are going to be sporadic. They're not going to be a, you know, everyday tech thing. In addition to that, we also have a dumpster issue. Obviously, we need to provide dumpsters, trash removal for this property. But we really lacking in terms of space for it. We originally designed the property next door for the standard. We came up with this design, which is currently built and it's operating for three dumpsters, service, servicing both SIFT and the standard building. And I believe they're using their, they're doing at least two dumps a week, possibly three. I don't remember. But there's currently an agreement that's been drafted between the current applicant for this building, Blue Turtle, and the HOA for the standard and SIFT bakery, so that they can all use the same. So that they can all use the same dumpster area, so we don't need to generate a new dumpster area. What they're going to do is they're going to modify the amount of times that dumpsters are used, and maybe additional you know, dumpster removal per week in order to facilitate everything. But there is an agreement in process here right now. They haven't fully executed it yet because they're trying to get all the parties together in one room. Everybody's been all over the place. And, and as of just, I think, this morning, there's a couple little tweaks to it that just came across my desk. So that is how we're handling the dumpsters and trash receptacles. I think that's going to work fine. Now, as I mentioned, majority of the, actually a hundred percent of the site is currently impervious. We tried to do something with that. You have, you know, requirements in your MDD for trying to provide some planting space in the front, along the front of the building. So what we did is in front of, the very front strip of the building, which is where I am pointing to right here, it's currently sidewalk, it's public sidewalk. But it's on our private property via an easement. It's on our property. But we got an awful lot of sidewalk here from people walking back and forth. What we're doing is we are actually going to be cutting out and removing a patch of that sidewalk to create a green planted area. So that conforms with your MDD requirements for doing some plantings along the front of the building. In addition to that, in the back, I took out the rear corner with the parking area, the island that we're not really using for parking, and doesn't make sense to keep that all as, you know, pavement if we can make something green back there. So we did that. So we're providing a green space here and a green space here. So in essence, we've actually reduced the impervious surface by a little bit. It's, it's, it's something for this particular site. Storm drainage is not an issue. When we designed storm drainage for the site next door, we actually also designed it for this site as well. Because everything combines. I'll change drawings here for a second. Everything combines here, storm drainage flow into a big trunk line that DOT runs. DOT owns this truck line, and it continues on out to an outfall in the river. This picks up everything going, coming up the street from Route One. I tracked that watershed back almost up to Allen Street at one time. In any event, this is all travels through here through an easement that the state owns and maintains. These two sites have always tied into it. But what, but they tied into it basically with sheet flow. When we constructed the building next door, the standard, we ended up putting in an inflow tied directly to the manhole here, and we put another inlet here. Both these inlets are basically oil-water separators. They're storm sectors, so we're addressing water quality. DOT was really, you know, concerned that we would address water quality with that. Bottom line is, this whole system is in place already. And it's been operating, and it's been operating, taking care of all of the runoff coming from this hundred percent impervious surface. We're not increasing flow because we're not increasing the impervious surface, so we're not really doing anything with storm drainage at all. Sewer and water, we have existing water services coming in off of Water Street that's being maintained. We also have municipal sewer coming off the back. And that's also being maintained. It's all gravity. This sewer line right here, the sewer manhole right here also picks up this building through an easement through here. And this has all kind of been historic. It's been that way since forever. It's just been upgraded when we constructed next door. So a sewer is taken care of, a water is taken care of, a storm drainage is taken care of. As Peter had mentioned, because we have a food service in here, even though they're not cooking, we still are required to put in oils, a grease, a grease trap. So we put in a grease separator tank in the back, thousand gallon tank. Comes out, it's in a bypass system. It comes out, and then it ties back into the into the sanitary sewer. So we've covered that base as well. We have layout here. Handicap parking has ADA sidewalk. There's an existing sidewalk now that we're going to maintain. We're going to fix. Next, we're going to run up to the actual ADA access to the front door of the retail, retail area. So we have a sidewalk that runs all the way up to Water Street and all the way back down to here. That's basically, in essence, all of the site improvements that we're proposing. We do not require it to have a bike, a bicycle rack as part of the MDD, you know, you know, bicycle rack is something everybody's looking for as far as public improvements of public improvements. We're not required to because we're basically under ten parking spaces on the site, so we're exempt from that. However, discussions with our staff, we're looking for a space to put a bike, bike rack. There's not a lot of room to do it. But what we're proposing to do is put a park bench out here. And a bench basically also meets the criteria for public improvements. So it'll be a park bench in the front along this planted bed, a nice place to sit down and look nice with pedestrians. We feel that what we've done here is basically minimal disturbance in the site, but it also meets all the intent of what you're trying to accomplish with the MDD regs. So that's, that's primarily what we have going on for the site.
Staff. Sure, I'll report.
Yeah.
Waiting all night for.
Yeah, no problem. So just a couple follow-up points to, to kind of, yeah, again, this is both a site plan and a coastal site plan approval. So the site is located within the coastal area management zone, requiring the camera view. There are, you know, the majority of the work is, is interior. Again, you know, removing the first floor flame, frame, replacing with concrete, and then building the, the approved apartment on the second floor. It is also within the flood zone, the AE zone. And, and again, as was explained before, they're going to be seeking a variance from the, from, from the fifty percent rule. This property is not directly on the waterfront, but there is actually an existing access point in the back of the property with, within the, between the guardrail, between one Water Street and the steamboat wharf parcel in the back. And there are no plans to change that, block that, anything. That's going to remain the same. And that's actually oftentimes used by the public to go down to the Mystic River to explore that way. Talked about parking. The landscaping is, is definitely an improvement. There is no existing landscaping right now. The reduct, by adding those two areas, they're reducing the amount of impervious by about two hundred and fifty square feet, which is an improvement. And again, as was mentioned, the proposed bench for the front to basically fulfill the public space requirement of the MDD zone. There is, you know, this is, would be a minor erosion and sediment control project, but there is a little bit of protection of those catch basins down there because of the disturbance of the back area there with the landscaping and putting the grease trap in, so that'll be taken care of. And then, you know, there is no, at this point, no known or foreseeable adverse impacts to the existing coastal resources. Obviously, I think you all have seen the, the staff summary sheet, which has a few other things, and there is a draft motion as well, so.
Okay. Welcome up to the commissioner for any questions or comments.
A couple of things. Possibility is, I'm looking at the planter, which, I mean, in that location, if you're serving things, we get nicer, have seat, a place to put seating outside. Frankly, you still have a wide sidewalk. But maybe you can do, you're saying you put a bench there. What are the possibilities? It's, it's nice, it'd be great to have seating there. The more seating we can have on, in that area, the better. But it doesn't need to be a bench. You already have a planter. What's the possibility of just making the planter wall eighteen inches high and fourteen inches deep all the way around so people can sit on it? Which they would. Instead of a separate bench? That sound viable? I think it sort of matches what's going on elsewhere.
One issue is, is if we, if we raise up the planter, we're going to be against wood framing of the building. As opposed to a flush.
So that's the situation. However, honestly, I, I get that, except that only if the planter's actually the, the grade of the planter inside is up to that height. I'm not proposing you do that.
Okay, alright.
It's just sort of a venture. It's really a seating wall, but with the planting inside, it'll look like it's coming out of a raised planter. See if I, I'll say that. And just for the record, I would do nothing to stop something like this going in to that place. It'll be so wonderful to have that running, the plumber in there. I can't, can't believe how wonderful that is. But just need to get on the record that, but heartburn about yet another two spaces. This is dust compared to what our other issues are with parking. But the deficit, we say it's two spaces. It's actually a deficit of four spaces because you get a fifty cent reduc, percent reduction. And we, we were, really, we're trying to put some pressure on people to go buy some parking someplace else, create a parking space not on site. In Stonington, you have to do it on site. We don't have that here. You could build them anywhere. We'd be okay with that. I don't know if we ever documented that. We were getting, that's a parking thing we were going to do and haven't yet. So I just want to get on record that I'm desperate for something like that to happen, and, and we're not going to do it here. It's still permissible. And I'm hoping we don't see any more of this until we can do something better with it. Just, in this case, we get you to build a couple things up the street, down the street, in Stonington. We wouldn't care where, just someplace in town. Build two more spaces. Don't just rent some that we already have. And that's all I have. I think everything else looks absolutely fine.
How does the dumpster use like legally treated? If there's another user or the property sold in the future, does it go through land records or is it through? Okay, that's what I want to make sure of, that it's not like lost somewhere down the road, kind of like an easement or something like that. Okay. Okay, that's fine. That's all I want to make sure of. The roof drains, they tie into, are there roof drains or?
Yeah, there are. And, and in fact, they already do tie into the storm drain system.
Okay, alright. Is there a cleaning schedule for the grease trap? And would it be on this? Hard to be a good idea.
And we can add that under technical items.
That's done. And then does, this doesn't require electric vehicle chargers?
No, not, not based upon the numbers.
So when we don't require bike racks or those kinds of things, it's due to the parking?
The, yes, the numbers.
And is that number based on the the fifty percent rule, or is it based on what would be required without the fifty percent? What's the minimum number of spaces?
I thought, I thought I heard ten.
No, that's how many you have. What's, what? What's the minimum number you have to have before you need to put in?
Oh, ten spaces.
Ten spaces, okay.
Yeah, EV is like a fifty percent increase in, in the number of spaces required.
Yep.
So that's, that's not the case here. But for EV stall.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it doesn't need that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. In this case, it wouldn't be that hard. It just attached to the.
Well, I mean, you know, if you can put a bicycle rack in, it's a park, it's a parking space otherwise, if you can avoid that someone runs to ride a bike.
Okay, so it's for bicycles, it's providing a minimum of ten, not, does, it's not key to the requirement. It's what they're providing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. That's all. Thank you.
So.
My likehouse, I deal with the planter. I think it's part of, people will, it's really popular. And I guess on the parking, I was just talking about that recently. And could we possibly get an update? Because I know that consultant was in here. There were all kinds of ideas. Just kind of what is a really big level plan, and where are we, and what do we have to do, any kind of timing?
Sure, I can, I can get that for you, I think. Sure, I'll get you, I'll get you an update. I just, I don't think the council has, has taken it up recently. But yeah.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I just want to check. So that, what I would consider the north side of this parcel, the roof drainage, as you talked about, that hasn't changed at all, right? So there's no possible additionally intrusion on the north side. Right? And so that's what I'll just check with everyone. So since you've got five spots here, right? And the rest are MAA. Mystery, right? Okay, okay. I just wanted to thank you for that, because I know you guys had a work on that. I appreciate, we, we appreciate that, so.
I just had one question on, on the parking for the tenant of the apartment. Shouldn't he have one of the parking places on site designated for his use?
That would make sense. I don't think we've gotten to the point yet as far as assigning parking to the users.
Well, just once, I think, just because you don't want him to count on having one of the unused places in the big parking lot behind there.
The whole groceries back and forth, yeah, I agree.
Well, not there, but on a big weekend, there are no places back there. You have people running around in circles looking for a spot. So I think the, the apartment renters should have a guaranteed spot. I didn't have anything else. Does any, anyone have any other questions?
Just what kind of food doesn't need to be cooked?
Cold farts, submarines.
Just, just quicker, just a business question.
I guess it comes prepared from all sub. So they have a couple other franchises in different parts of Connecticut, so they must have a central place where they get their food and they prepare it and they bring it in.
Like a soup, you mean, like a soup?
I don't know if they do soup, but.
No, but I mean. Microwave noodles or something. I don't know. I was interested in that. God bless them.
Well, I go stop down and see.
They have a couple others that seem to be doing quite well. It's called Boost Bowls. You can go on the internet and check it out.
We'll do, thank you.
Okay. So we have a my draft, draft motion. Does anyone have concerns?
Everyone has a copy, I'm assuming.
Draft motion. Anyone have any concerns?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, so I'll move to approve the site plan application, SIT twenty-three zero 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 three. Blue Water Renovations, one Water Street with the following conditions. One, a public bench shall be provided to fulfill the public space requirements of the MDD district. Two, an elevation certificate shall be prepared and submitted to the Office of Planning and Development Services, OPDS, prior to the issuance of the Certificate of Site Plan Compliance. Three, a common dumpster agreement shall be forwarded to OPDS prior to the issuance of the Certificate of Site Plan Compliance. Four, technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth and seconded? Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, we have item number one. We're going to change, we're considering, we're not going to ask them to provide a bench. Instead, we're going to have them do not, we can agree on what the language would be. I'm suggesting an eighteen inch high, fourteen inch wide planter wall suitable for seating. That sound about right?
Seating area.
Not seating area, just for suiting, suitable to be sat on, so suitable for seating.
I think we should make sure it's right, you know, because sometimes even a couple inches can make a.
We're pretty good on eighteen. That's why I looked over and we got a agreement.
So you want to say, you want, you say suitable.
That's true.
Well, can we leave that as a tech, can we leave it as a technical item?
Okay.
Why don't we leave it as a technical item?
Well, it is a technical item, though we didn't say how big the bench is in that case, which I think I'd want to say. I want a two-seater bench. This is giving us, you know, eight seats out there very nicely, so.
Inside of this one. So so size-wise, you want to put that under technical items? Yeah, okay. So include all of, all of number one you want under technical?
No.
Or you still want to keep?
I want to leave type one as the way.
Just the details though, okay, yep.
And we'll handle.
Well, can we say, can we say a public bench or raised planter wall? Well, that, that would be another technical.
Public bench.
You can figure that.
Well, we could do that. Or raise.
Planter wall. Seems like that makes for a nice cheap bench in my mind, but.
Public bench or raised public wall. Does the second agree with this? So we don't have to make another.
Yeah, just for rather rules, yes, thank you.
Well, otherwise we have to go through another vote.
I know.
Trying to.
Not everybody really does that.
They don't?
Not everybody really. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't know who's watching on, on the video. Okay, so we'll make that modification. So we have them, the motion is modified. Vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Now we have a second motion, no?
Yeah.
We have the cam. That's a gimme. So I'll move to approve the coastal site plan application, CSP twenty-three zero zero, zero three. Blue Water Renovations, One Water Street. Findings, the commission hereby finds that the application is modified, is consistent with all applicable goals and policies of CGS twenty-two eight dash ninety-two, and incorporates all reasonable measures which would mitigate adverse impacts of the proposed activity on coastal resources. Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth and seconded. Any questions or concerns of the motion for cam? And I will vote on approval of the cam application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. But look at all those tombstones. I know the planter thing works because thirty years ago it's still there. That's the top of. I just thought there were only that much. I didn't realize there was all that others. It's ridiculous.
It's just a wall, but then you put shrub.
Historic history.
Hmm.
Yeah, they prove anything. Well, that big dumpster's house on top of Port Rachel. And they're supposed to improve my scale. Next, next item is we have uh SIT twenty-three zero zero four. New industrial building, one fifteen Leonard Drive. The applicant would like to make a presentation to us.
Sure. Uh, good evening, Susan Marquardt, professional engineer in Connecticut from Marrero Engineering. I have John Luther here from EL four LLC, the applicant and the owner um of the property. So just gonna go to the existing conditions plan, second. So the site currently is three uh parcels. The existing building at one fifteen Leonard Drive and one uh forty-five Leonard Drive. And then there's a strip of land that goes along the railroad track behind the site that is Zero um Tower Avenue. And this is all in the industrial park that is over by the Groton Airport. Part of this uh application will be to do a lot merger. So I'm gonna go to the next sheet. So the new property line will extend behind um between one fifteen and one forty-five. It'll extend back to the railroad tracks. So this piece of Zero Tower Ave will uh merge with this lot. And the remaining piece of Zero Tower Ave will uh merge with one forty-five um Leonard Drive. So when I say the site, basically it is one fifteen Leonard Drive and the strip. That now will be merged together to be the parcel. So on the site currently is an existing building that has a small office in it. It's mostly warehouse. Ex- two existing driveway cuts on Leonard Drive, existing parking um for that building. And existing utilities in Leonard Drive um serve the existing building. There are wetlands that are located along the railroad tracks that here and go all the way down to um to Tower Avenue. Um, this has gone before the Wetlands Commission and it was approved in October. So this is the site plan that shows the new uh one-story industrial building. Um, it's just a little over eighteen thousand square feet. Currently, we're not sure what tenant will go into the building. It could be one tenant, they'll come in and take the entire building. It currently we show it, it could be split into three uh different tenants. Uh, we're not really sure. So we've provided um an architectural plan that shows you what the, the metal building will look like. As far as the interior, we're not sure until a tenant comes forward. And when they do, um, it'll be an administrative site plan, so we'll have a floor plan that'll show exactly where that tenant is gonna go in the building, what that would look like. And then that would also go into the parking calculations. The parking calculations that we currently show on the plan provide enough parking for the existing use, which like I mentioned, is office and warehouse. Um, for calculations for the new building, we just kind of made some assumptions that could be some office, could be some warehouse. And those would be the highest parking calculations, and that's how we came up with, with what we show. So there's forty-five parking spots um that we show on there currently, and we show there's some additional ones that could be provided. They're shown as reserve. It's really just showing there's flexibility there, depending on what kind of tenant uh would go into the building. And at that time, like I said, we'll know exactly what that use would be, what the parking requirement for that use would be. As far as um utilities for the building, um like I mentioned, there's already currently um utilities out in Leonard Drive that service the existing building. So there will be new services that will be um going back to the, to the new building. As far as stormwater, the roof from the front of the building connect, uh the existing building connects into the storm drain system. Uh, there's catch basins on site that go out to drainage on Leonard Drive. And the roof leaders at the back of the existing building currently just sheet flow across the parking lot. So there are two underground um infiltration systems. And we're gonna collect uh the roof water from the back of the existing building, connect that into the new stormwater system. The roof water from the entire new building will go into the underground detention systems as well as the new pavement. Part of the system is um an isolator row, which will provide the water quality volume. So we're treating and also decreasing the flow um from leaving the site. We're keeping the existing drainage conditions. It's kind of a high point here. And this kind of sheet flows back to the wetland and for what here kind of comes to the existing drainage out to Leonard Drive. So we're keeping with that same, so some of the underground detention system will overflow and connect into the catch basins, go out to Leonard Drive as it does now. The rest will um go to a riprap outlet that will sheet flow across to the wetlands. This is a site plan application. This is a cam application. Uh, we are in the, the new building will be in the flood zone. It is elevation ten. So the new building's finished floor elevation will be more than one foot above that flood elevation. All the mechanical equipment, um, we show some locations in the back of the building, depending on how many um tenants go in as to how many, how much mechanical equipment we'll need. But we do show that in the back and the elevation of all of that is above the flood um as well. In regard to landscaping, there are um existing large street trees. So the calculation shows that seven trees are required. Um, due to the size of the existing ones here, um, we are proposing one additional, which would give you um six, and then in order to make up the rest, we've added additional um perimeter street tree. So we're still providing the same, we're just not um trying to put them all right in front because those trees are rather large. In regard to parking perimeter landscaping, we have trees along both sides that um provide for the one for every fifty linear feet of parking. Um, we do have some landscape islands. There's some here in front of the existing building. And that's the location of those. There is a gravel drive around the back of the new building and some gravel storage um area here for equipment. And basically what's gonna be parked in that equipment is box trailers that the existing, a use for the existing building, um. They take them, and you probably know a little bit more about how they use them, but I believe they just park them there and take them to sites.
Yeah, they're, they're East Coast Val, they're about company, so they, they have portable machine shops. So when they're doing a large project that, that refinery or something in New York, they'll load equipment on these box trailers, bring them to the site, use them as a offsite or, excuse me, onsite machine shop. And then when they're not using them, they bring them back and they just put them in the back, just leave them there until they need them again, but they are at the building close, so there's nothing.
Um, we do show um EV parking um and EVR parking. Um, obviously that will be, the exact number will be worked out based on parking requirements when we determine exactly what the use of the new building will be. Let's see, uh, as far as lighting, um, currently there are no um light poles, uh, there's just lighting on the building itself. And so for the new building, it will be similar, wall-mounted um lighting around the building, which will provide um all the lighting that'll be needed for the parking. So there's no light poles or anything that are proposed. There's existing sidewalk that runs along um Leonard Drive. Um, so no new sidewalks are um proposed with this application. As far as trash, we do have um a location for a new enclosed dumpster. Currently, um, I think there's just a couple dumpsters sitting behind the existing building that they use, right?
Right now, there's, there's actually two tenants in the building here. There's um Hongsburg uh Simulations on one side, East Coast Val's on the other. And they both have their own dumpsters. But with the new tenant, we're gonna, landlord's gonna take over the dumpsters. We're gonna have one second dumpster eliminated, so we don't have dumpsters back here. Actually, clean the site up for it, but they each have their own cardboard dumpster, dry dumpster, it's just, you know, the dumpsters in the back. So that'll be a nice move as we get those off the parking areas.
Okay. Um, that was all I had, so if you have any questions?
Alright, does staff have a report?
I don't have, I don't have too much to add um to this. Obviously, it's an industrial subdivision. Um, the buildings that are here um are, are full and there is definitely a need for these types of buildings. Um, before this plan, if it's approved, before the plan is filed in land records, the lots will have to be merged um so that we're not building a building over a lot line. Um, and a- as Susan mentioned, um, the parking that is shown on the plan is sufficient for what, what she has called out as, as office and warehousing. Um, when a tenant is actually identified, if um more parking is required, um, they have the space on the site to provide that. Um, and again, we'll do that, we'll review it um via administrative site plan. Um, because the building is in the flood zone, we're gonna require an elevation certificate prior to CO.
Okay, open up the collection for any questions. Start with you, huh?
I've known.
Hmm.
I've known.
I, I just, uh, the, are the dumpsters required to be screened?
Yes, yeah, they'll be something.
I mean, how about the box trailers? What is that? That storage area, does that like have any kind of screening or anything like that, just because?
So.
I mean, the only concern, I guess, is that there's other businesses down there that are like the brewery or something like that that are a little more, I just don't want.
Yep.
You know?
So you know where that's location. This is the school bus park.
Oh, okay.
And then you've actually got the railroad tracks here. You actually have a wood line back here.
Yeah.
So there's a wood line, then there's railroad, then there's another wood line, and then there's the trail department. Uh, far side here, so yeah, this is really just a bus park.
I'm gonna be less concerned, but I just would say that, I mean, as the landlord, you're gonna wanna keep it looking nice.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, our goal too is, you know, whatever tenant we have, everything is gonna be going in the building. We don't want people waiting. The only reason we did this was for our existing tenant. He has those trailers and we don't wanna try and squeeze them in somewhere here.
Yeah, yeah.
We just said, let's create an area in the back here, which again, create a lot more work because then that throws within the wetlands, but, you know, again, it satisfies them. They can, they can store the trailer back there when they don't need it.
No other.
Like you said, you really wouldn't even see it from the road.
Yeah.
Once the leaves are out, you know, that's.
Buses will block it.
Yeah.
Or, no questions then, thank you.
So.
No, I don't have any questions, but it's nice to see that whole area so busy.
Hmm.
It wasn't when I first moved to.
Oh, yeah, it's changed.
Yeah.
So, so I don't, I just want to thank you for your continued investment in Groton. Very much appreciated, so.
Yeah, we try even the properties, I've been down there, we, we actually own the bus lot.
Yeah.
This lot, I own Blue Defense Building and then we own the C four buildings across the street, so we try and keep the landscapes. We, part of our, you know, deal with tents is we take care of the outside properties. We don't, you know, triple that, then let them hire somebody, so we make sure it's, it's maintained and.
Yeah.
My eighty-five-year-old mother's out there leaving.
Labor.
The birds, yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
And we actually just jump ahead, we actually have, we're ninety-nine percent there, we already have a tenant that wants the whole space, so.
Wow.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't wanna list it yet until we had approvals, but
Right.
Just word of mouth got out and phone contacted me and now they're, so it's, yeah, like, that space is just, can't build it fast enough.
Yeah. I, I noticed yesterday there were a couple of uh ten-wheelers that were parked in the area next.
I was gonna say, right on the side here is probably.
Is that, are they gonna be used, is that in the future or?
No.
I don't have a problem with that, but I just think it ought to be designated.
Put back here, cause right now they really know the place to put them, because, you know, we're kinda keeping this area clear. It's, it's dirt and they don't really wanna put a driver truck back in here.
Oh, no, I, yeah.
But yeah, so what they're, they're, the plan is those, those track trailers that are literally parked right along the side here.
Right.
They're gonna put those back in here, so if, if anything, they'll be.
Will the final plan show that as a parking area for?
Yeah, 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 we could even just, you know, show.
Or label it as something?
Yep.
Okay, no, I was just thinking if they were parked there, then the farm marshal might be concerned with.
Yeah, yeah.
With that, he should have.
I, I don't like them parked there either. I just don't.
Well, I didn't care they were there. I just saw they were there.
That's why I kinda don't do the extra to, to create that space.
That's a good.
Trailers out here, so they're not in view of the front of the property. It's, you know, it is kinda silencing. Box trailer is parked right there on the side.
And there's enough space between the two buildings to unload, if it's a warehouse?
Yeah, um. You're saying.
For trucks to come in and.
Yep, yep, yeah, there's uh, I believe it's sixty feet between these two here.
Hmm.
And, and most likely too, like the, even the parking spaces right here, those are just if we need them.
Oh, I wasn't worried about that.
Yes, so those may not even be there, so this whole.
Well, the doors are, you know, sort of at the two ends.
We don't know.
No, no, I meant that access.
Overhead doors?
Yeah.
Yep.
They're not in the middle of the buildings.
Yeah, no, we probably most likely be towards the front or even something right along the front here.
Yeah.
Um, the, the tenant we're dealing with only wants one overhead door and they're talking about cooking around this side.
Oh, really?
So that's.
Hmm.
So yeah, and, and actually there, there won't, it'll be more warehouse than anything, so there's parking requirements to go down.
Hmm, okay. Does anyone have any other questions? We have a motion that's been prepared. Does anyone have cons- any concerns with the motion? No last minute changes? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve SIT twenty-three zero zero, zero four industrial building. One fifteen Leonard Drive with the following modifications. One, the two lots will be merged prior to filing the site plan and land records. Two, any. Two, any revisions to the plan required by Groton Utilities, the Fire Marshal. Or any other outside agency shall require additional review and approval by the Office of Planning and Development Staff. Or the Planning and Zoning Commission as appropriate. Three, twenty-five percent of the parking spaces provided for this building will be made ready. For the future installation of level two EV charging stations. Four, technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? We'll vote then on the motion to approve uh site plan twenty-three zero 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 four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. And we have a motion for the CAM. I move to approve the coastal site plan for industrial building one fifteen Leonard Drive because it is consistent with all. Applicable coastal policies and includes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts on coastal resources. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Kevin.
I was louder. I thought I was louder. Uh, thank you very much.
Give you a second. Yet appeared in the minutes. Okay, are any questions on the motion for the CAM approval? None will vote on approval of the CAM. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Good luck with this. That whole place looks really neat, it's so neat.
I go down there often. Yeah, because we're always looking for industrials.
It's unusual to see a place that's maintained.
I agree. Very attractive, right, sounds funny.
No, it is, yeah, for especially for any area, but I mean, especially in industrial.
Saying nice things about it.
No, we just liked the whole Leonard Drive, how it's laid out. Extremely great, you know, street as far as an industrial part of our town, so.
Yes.
It really is well.
It's for industrial purposes, it's got the, the three phase power, the gas is there, all our utilities, sewer, water. So if you put an ashtray anymore.
Oh, but it's so well maintained, that's, that's unusual.
Like I said, we try and keep the properties open.
Industrial park kind of thing.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Okay. All business, I guess we have none, no business, no applications. We got uh two listed here, ten twenty-eight Proquonic Road. Or one in the spec.
It's one, one property, but it needs both the special permit and the site plan. It's the old post office where Gabriel's karate.
Oh, oh, that's what it is.
Now, forget the Quantic Road goes up that.
Yeah, so this is to convert the building into.
The rest of it.
The rest.
Rest of it into a month, oh.
Yes.
So.
The second floor.
The second floor is apartments.
Apartments already, yeah, there's already uh ten, ten above and seven below. Yeah, seven below, so this is gonna convert the, the remaining uh studio into an additional four apartments.
So they already have a lot of.
Yes.
Like things and good improvements there, okay. Referrals, we have a Z P A referral. The A R twenty-three zero 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 four and so Zero Clark Lane.
Zero Clark Lane, yeah.
Those streets, people, every year they seem to change their names.
This is a paper street, I mean, it's not an improved street.
Yeah, but it's a blocked street.
Yeah.
Because there's that, they gave away part of.
Oh, right, right, right.
To this property.
Yeah, right. Um, so, you know, it's an old subdivision, um, they're asking for a variance to have access that's not on a town-accepted street. And have a common access driveway.
Does anyone have any concerns? I have one concern, not with it going through. But is Charles Street, that's a paper, not a, an accepted incorporated street?
That's right.
Well, how does a new house or development on that street happen? They have to have an agreement with all these existing owners or is there an agreement or who makes?
So, uh, to my knowledge, I mean, it's, it's not a town-accepted street, so the property owners of the houses that are on that road, you know, take care of that road. I don't know if they have a formal agreement or not.
Well, should we make that a concern and say there has to be, they should have a, a formal agreement for maintenance?
Sure.
For the shared drive.
I mean, this particular house is not going to use the Charles Lane portion to access it.
Can't, but it's the only way you can access.
No, it'll come in from Clark. Is where they're, I mean, eventually.
If you look at it, there, there's an existing. Uh, house or lot arrangement that blocked, that took the connection to Clark Lane. Out of the, out of the picture. It's incorporated in another lot, so the only access is on Charles. Why, at least the things you gave us show that.
Interesting point.
Yeah. They'll, actually. They'll actually, coming in off of the driveway on Clark and then turning on to William Street.
That's Charles Street.
Right, right, which is Charles Street on the other end.
Yeah, but this lot, the new, this lot is actually combining two lots on the nineteen oh seven.
They are.
Plan. And it should, and the only access to it is off of Charles Street because.
But they'll.
The lot for ninety-five Warren Avenue blocks off Clark Street.
Yeah.
But they will, they will be coming, the driveway will come across Clark Lane.
Hmm, they can't.
They'll come in this way.
You can't.
It'll zig around it.
Yeah, exactly.
It can, has to make a turn. And then you're on, on Charles Street.
Right.
Yep.
The lot, only access is off Charles Street.
When they come off of Warren.
They're gonna come off.
They're not coming off of the, the northern portion of Charles.
There, you want them to drive in on Clark Street, take a right.
That's my understanding of how it's going to be.
A right turn onto Charles Street.
Right, that's right.
So then they need two agreements and.
Sure, yeah, 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 they should, that's correct.
That's, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
But they gotta, I thought they come in off of Charles. Why is that? I don't know.
Yeah.
Just doesn't make any sense to me. But I don't know why they gave away that little chunk. Yeah.
I, yeah.
It looks like somebody making a jigsaw puzzle.
Yep.
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 But I think they ought to.
Value of that land, but.
That, before they agree with.
Maybe it's relative.
With allowing the P C V A ought to make sure that there's a agreements with. For these paper streets.
Like a maintenance.
Their shade, well, they're really calling them a shared driveway. Well, I was looking at this name. Uh, what it calls William Street on the paper you gave us. Today it's Charles Street. And if you go back and look at some of the land records, because I was concerned with how this thing was developed. They had another Seminole or something street was what Williams.
Right, that's right, yeah, that's right.
And I was surprised that even in nineteen eighties, they referred to this location as West Mystic.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, yep.
Cause I thought by then they'd stopped delivering mail. With a West Mystic address by then, but I may be wrong. No, I was just surprised to see that. Cause this was all originally West Mystic down from where.
Right.
The railroad station down to Baby Cove.
Right.
Hmm.
Recommended a maintenance agreement with the driveway.
So I have a problem with that, just, I don't wanna get people in trouble and then find out they don't have rights to, to drive in. They should get rid of paper streets.
Then we'd have to exempt them. Then we would have to exempt.
Actually, there's a process for doing this.
Yeah.
That I got involved in.
There is, there is.
But it, it just seems like it's a mess.
Yeah, I think only one or maybe two streets have actually used that process to become town-accepted roads.
Yeah.
Yep.
But one of them was somebody who lived on Logan Lane wanted to.
Yep.
And then all, all his neighbors refused to sign up. They wanted to remain, is a private street full of potholes. Well, in the wintertime, you gotta hire people to plow. It's not a good thing. Alright, any other comments on this?
It's a good comment.
Alright, report of. Chair. I guess, uh. John Reinhardt has set up a. A meeting for next week for. Trying to come up with a P O C D uh. Request for proposal review.
And then the schedule.
And the schedule, yeah. So we, we're making progress on that. You're smiling, you don't think so.
Oh, no, no, definitely are.
Okay. And. We ought to think about, I guess, trying to organize all these comments for short-term rentals so we can review them. I'd like to see if we can ch- put them together to have.
Yep.
Maybe major headings to discuss it, just as a way of helping us out. Our discussion and that brought up an interesting question on. On uh reading things in the newspaper and editorial page about short-term rentals, if that could, if we have to make statements.
I, I think you should, I mean, I know there have been two op-eds since the hearing closed. So, uh, when you do start your discussion of this text amendment, if you've read them, I mean, you should just note that during, yeah, exactly. And, and acknowledge that it's not going to impact your, your decision.
Or just say it's no different.
Consider it.
Or it's no different than what we've already received as input.
Right.
Just additional.
Yep.
The same discussion.
Exactly.
Cause it's sort of odd, odd to have something like this where it's, when we're developing regulation as opposed to approving. Something as to whether we have to worry about that. Well, good point. Alright, that's all I had.
Talking about short-term. Um, regulations right now, or you just, was that an add-on part of the staff?
No.
Right, it's not on the agenda.
No, no, we're not talking about them tonight.
God, I just wanna make sure, right?
Oh, no. Give it some thought.
Yep.
So that we're organizing, we actually get to the point of discussing. Rather than having to review twenty sheets of paper.
Oh, well, right.
You could probably put them into three or four different categories or rationale and then talk about it that way.
Okay.
To make sure we reach an agreement.
Okay.
No, we can't really discuss.
No, I'm fine, I just.
And I just thought it was interesting to say we can't, can't ignore the editorial pages.
Or the comments.
Or the, or the letters.
Yeah.
No letters. Okay, report of commission, is anyone on the commission have anything to bring for us?
I have a little, little kind of heads up, I think, I'm not sure who this goes to, but I just noticed on Route twelve. It's actually, I had to look it up, three seventy-five Route twelve. Um, it's actually the. Accessory Warehouse Corporation, though I don't think there's any sign that says that, that, or the only sign says U-Haul is the tire place.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure, and maybe I'm wrong about this, that what we approved had fencing around where the tires would be stuck. And they are just pouring out onto a parking lot.
Okay.
Parking lot is now two-thirds the size that it originally was, and there's these beautifully interlaced tires just kind of moving out like a blob.
Yep.
Do you think they're reproducing? In some way. It looks like.
They're just parked in car places.
Yeah, that's a lot of tires, yeah.
Are these new ones or hold on?
Who, and I, who knows, but they're interlaced in such a way that that's where you store them for long term.
Oh, is it? They got a special deal. Anybody else have anything? Hey, report of staff?
So I, I don't really have a report, but a question. At the last, at the short-term rental hearing, we had indicated that you'd be discussing it at the next meeting.
No, we changed that.
But I, I, there might be some issues with uh people attending, is everybody gonna be here at the next meeting?
No, no, that's what I don't.
Okay.
I won't be here.
Right, right, and I.
And that's why I, I thought we said we'd do it at the time.
Okay, I just wanna have.
Be here either, right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, because we had said during that meeting that.
It was, it was later.
One in February, so I just wanna make it clear, we're not doing that.
Right.
It will be the second one in February.
Twenty-seven.
Excellent.
Hmm.
Okay, very good.
Cause I wanna, I think we should have our.
Everybody here.
Yes, everybody here.
Yep.
Normal.
Okay.
People, since it's so important, waiting another two weeks hasn't been.
That's what I understood, is that it would be the second meeting and.
I think that was after the meeting ended.
Oh.
Oh, I thought it was before, I mean.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Okay, okay.
So maybe we should put that in the minutes tonight.
Exactly. Yes.
So it gets out to the public.
Yes. Yep, um, the other thing I just wanna note is, um, our new planning tech has started yesterday. Um, Shannon Noonan, you can see she's actually attending, um, although I think at some point you will see her in person.
Great, congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, and then we have a zoning official interpretation. It got me upset. Well, I don't. I don't know whether the guys went to the magic mushroom store before he came up with this. But I don't think it's realistic, and when you look at the regulations, it has two things for parking. For these outdoor activities. One is a golf course and the other one says for everything else. So he doesn't have the right, to me, by reading that, he can't make that, this decision.
Well.
And the decision should go to Z V A. And, and I think with the last, I have only, was only on this thing, this uh adventure park or whatever they call it. Once.
Tree trails.
But inside there, there was an activity place that was set up for it. It wasn't just climbing around from limb to limb on trees. So I don't think it's realistic to call it a golf course.
I, I think his point was that it operates the same way a golf course does. In that you have to have an appointment, there are scheduled times when you can actually use it. Um, it, it's not something that is just wide open and you.
Well, if he wanted, well, but then he said it has to be a nine hole course and not a, not an eighteen, and that makes no sense.
Yeah.
The way, what you just said, I think is right, but we really ought to, but I just think he ought to be more careful. With these decisions, and maybe if it's a one-shot deal, it's better to go to the Z V A, cause once he makes this. Stripped and stolen.
Well, it is for this property, that's right.
Well, I don't know if it isn't for anything.
We actually, this was actually um a, a text amendment that we did not too long ago. Initially, the parking calculation was based on the size of the property. And you changed it to be the size, the area of the outdoor recreation. Um, which didn't really help this.
No, I think. No, but thinking about it, I think it, the whole thing ought to be reworked. Because it, it would apply to a, a park. You know, Sutton Park or one of these. In a lot of these outdoor activities, you have unpaved parking. And who cares what the sizes or how many spaces you have, it's just the volume, how do you control the volume of people there? In that, or do we care? Just say you can't park on the street, so you have to have parking for your customers. But it's not paved, so do we really care how many places you have, or even if you can identify the places?
Well, it's paved, but it's still, I, the area is identified, and there are practical limits.
The area is, yeah.
Sixty-foot wide aisles to park cars on either side.
Oh, no, but I mean, the area for parking can be identified, right, but I, I don't know that you can really. Use that, if it's a small park, you do, but what if it's a big one? Then you can't. You know, and I, I think that putting it down as a thousand, what is it, every thousand? You know, and I, I think that putting it down as a thousand, what is it, every thousand feet places you had to have this? Thousand square feet you had to have parking places.
Yeah, yeah.
So that means on an acre, you'd have forty-four.
I, I know, I know, I agree, it does need to be looked at, I mean, look at, look at the cop property, right? You order forty acres, I mean, it's essentially all recreation, um, we, we certainly don't provide the parking.
No, but maybe the parking, maybe the allocated parking place controls it, or you control it by how many people you sell tickets to to get into it.
If there are, yeah.
But it would vary, I mean.
We, we can do some research to see what other towns, I mean, I, I know some towns don't address it at all. That we, because there's a couple of towns in Connecticut that have aerial ropes courses, so we kind of looked at that to see.
Yeah.
And they, they just don't address it, it's like, whatever parking you propose, you know your business.
Because you're control, yeah, they're controlling it by the acreage for parking.
Yep.
Which I don't think is wrong.
Yep.
When you see a place like Bluff Point where there can be hundreds of cars, right?
Yeah, but that controls access.
Yeah, right, oh, sure.
So you're just saying I have an acre's worth of parking.
Yep.
That's fine.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, we, we do need, it, it doesn't work well.
Pretty hard to come up with it, how to control, how to define it, I should say.
Yep. Yep.
And if it's just by space, allocated space rather than number of parking places on these, because they're large, usually it's a large place. We don't have a lot of potentials like that in town, but, but some places they do.
Mr. Chair, what's your position on this?
Well, I'm just not happy with, with, I think he, the zoning official didn't follow the written text of what was defined, and if you really look at the place he could make up his own rules, it says where it wasn't defined, and this was two definitions, golf course or everything else.
But even that where it wasn't defined, I mean, we had that issue with the telecommunications.
Well, that's the other.
That's my concern.
That's another, yeah.
And it's, I don't understand why we're not working together, and we, uh, the language, I think we intended something like this, it'd be, and especially what we're supposed to know what the zoning rates. Um, it'd be really nice if him come in ahead of time, and we could talk about it or something.
Maybe before he issues something in writing, he should let us look at it or talk to us about.
Yeah, I'll suggest that, I mean, at this point, it's, if, if you want to contest it, if you need to appeal it to them.
Yeah, but I, I look at this, and it doesn't tell, it doesn't answer the question. I mean, just the way the letter is written, it asks a question and he just, it doesn't tell him, this is what you have.
I think going forward, it'd be really nice if we could work better together, you know, preempt these things, because I don't think it's a great situation.
And maybe in some of these, the Z V A does make sense on having a Z V A to make the, these re- requirements that are unique to this thing that is the only place in town.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think the regulation needs to be looked at, but yeah, okay.
I don't, that's pretty tough. It's not like a regular business.
Solution is to have it go before the C B A, and it's just another, you know.
Yeah, but then they would, but then they review it for the actual case, doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
And if there are restrictions on it.
Yeah, because you can see places that, like Bluff Point, which we don't.
Right.
Control the parking, I mean, a place like that, or say, cop.
Cop.
Yeah.
Yeah, the cop property was a good.
Yeah.
Lot, lot bigger difference in use.
Right.
Yeah, for a dog park.
But the parking that, I've seen Bluff Point filled up, you know.
Yeah, that's right. No, but maybe that filling up says that's the limit of people.
But it doesn't, they'll just, that would be great if that were the case, but that's not the way it works.
For regulars in town.
Well, it's gonna be fine, but where the problem is, it's a. And that's, that does not live in.
You want to say that you can't public, park on the public streets, you have to.
And that probably the Z B A is the place to, to go for that.
Could be, yeah.
Well, yeah, or, or fix the regulation.
If you can.
Yeah.
It may not be fixable.
Yeah.
Well, we can fix it, yep. Maybe.
Maybe.
Hire a consultant. I'd like to see what anybody else has done.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, I think, see if anybody, there's. But I've been to some of these outside events where they're out in fields or open areas where they just have a big field for parking.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And that's, and they control it by selling tickets to the event. But they don't sell, you have to have a thousand parking places or anything like that.
No, but then also the parking. They have room for X number of, for X number of cars.
Yeah, and then they might say we're full, you can't park here, and the cops will come along and you can't park in the state.
Or, or, or it is ticket control, then it's.
Ticket control.
Or if it's a one-time event as opposed to something that is ongoing, right? And then you don't want to have parking spaces that are set up in a field somewhere that are too close or dangerous or the.
Yeah, well, those have to be organized somewhat, but you're not by number, they're really by area, area.
There was, was a little point, you know, the yacht club, I went to an event, and they were trying to park her by in that field there.
Yeah.
Which was a little crazy.
So you mean, that's now the dog field. Yeah.
What's our first field, you get?
They bought the.
Oh, yeah?
No, the guy that owns, you know, Marina bought that piece of property, and it's chained off now.
Oh, gee.
Dog park or something, but that's how they used to park.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, I was just wondering, is there rules for that, I never thought of it. Because you can put quite different cars.
Well, you put a lot of.
But not enough, sometimes.
Yeah, oh, no, well, you put a lot of cars where the boats are parked.
Yeah.
They're all in the water, then you put more.
That's right.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else? So I'm gonna entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Two seconds in one night.
Two marks.